Good evening. This is a special notice pursuant to executive order N-2920 executed by the Governor of California on March 17, 2020 and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission scheduled for Wednesday, June 9, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. will allow members of the public to participate and address the commission during the open session of the meeting via teleconference only. I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Paramount Planning Commission, June 9, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Again.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Here.
Commissioner Bautista.
Here.
Commissioner Sparza.
Here.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Chair Weisenberger.
Here.
Item number one, approval of minutes from our Planning Commission meeting on May 11. You have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Brago, I move we approve the minutes for May 18.
Mr. Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Item two, we need a motion to approve the minutes from the joint meeting of the Paramount City Council and the Planning Commission on May 18. We had a motion to approve, please.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, item number three, public hearing. Unclassified use permit number 2001, a request by Harder Mechanical for Alt Air Paramount LLC to allow the use of temporary structures at the World Energy Refinery at 14700 Downey Avenue in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone. Courts, please.
Oh, yes. Yes, right. So Commissioner Brago is excusing himself because he works for World Energy? Okay. Okay. You want the chair? So Commissioner Brago works for World Energy, so he needs to excuse himself. If you could make that announcement, Gordon.
Yes. Commissioner Brago works for World Energy and is going to refuse himself from this hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brago's dis- excuses himself as a result of a conflict of interest with his employer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to give you this presentation. Okay, so this requ- I'm sorry. This request is to use temporary office structures at the World Energy Refinery at 14700 Downey Avenue in the Heavy Manufacturing Zone. By way of background, in 2018, World Energy purchased Alt Air and the Paramount Refinery. Alt Air became a wholly owned subsidiary of World Energy. In December of 2020, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for Alt Air Paramount to install two temporary modular office structures, and that was for three years, and those are located off of Contreras Street. And upcoming, in the next couple of months, the Planning Commission will be reviewing a refinery conversion project, and that will convert the refinery from producing products from petroleum and will be using renewable fuels. So the oil, crude oil, will be eliminated. Actually, they haven't been doing crude oil there for several years. So here's a site plan of the refinery site. Somerset is on the bottom, Lakewood's on the right, Downey's on the left, and you can see the areas where the temporary structures will be located are designated by area A, B, C, D, and E. So there will be 10 structures. There will be a bank of four turnstiles for security purposes. There will be a lunch tent that is about 8,800 square feet. There will be a storage structure, a security storage structure, that will be 320 square feet. There will also be a changing shack for male workers and female workers, and then a 480 square foot medical facility, and then four additional field offices. And again, these are the areas where those structures will be located, so throughout the site of the refinery. Here's a look at what one of the structures will look like. And this is what the lunch tent will look like. And the top is a picture of the refinery. On the bottom right are the temporary office structures that were approved by the Planning Commission last year. Again, those are located off of Contreras. And we're recommending that you adopt resolution number PC 21011. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, open the public hearings tonight, John. We have any public hearings? Public comments?
No public comments, sir.
Okay, and in that case, we need a motion to close the public hearings.
Mr. Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and motion to close the public hearing.
Sparza, will second.
Commissioner Bautista. Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, let's, if someone could make a motion to adopt Planning Commission resolution number PC 21011.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll second it.
Commissioner Bautista.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. There we go. Now we're back to full strength.
That's good.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, conditional use permit number 905, a request by Industrial Castor and Wheel Company, California Corporation, to operate a warehouse/distribution business specializing in caster wheels and related products at 7623 Somerset Boulevard in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This item is a request to allow a small warehouse and distribution business that specializes in caster wheels and related products at 7623 Somerset Boulevard. Associate Planner Ivan Reyes will go over the details with you.
Thank you, John. Honorable Chair, members of the commission, I'm here to present conditional use permit number 905 for Industrial Castor and Wheel Company. The request is to operate a warehouse and distribution business specializing in caster wheels and related products. The address is 7623 Somerset Boulevard, located in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone. The site is 8.59 acres, and the suite is in 8,438 square foot tenant space. And below is a picture of the tenant space. So they're proposing to have six employees. Their proposed hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. They're proposing to have one vehicle stored inside the warehouse, and they will have up to two outgoing shipments per day. Here's an image of their website, Industrial Castor and Wheel, or better known as ICW. As a distributor, ICW, they carry a substantial inventory in all of its locations. They are a distributor of many manufacturers of castors and wheels, both domestic and imported. They offer a wide range of sizes, types, and styles for a variety of applications. As you can see the image there, those are some of their products that they sell. Here's a project location site. Again, 7623 is the tenant space, just north of Somerset Boulevard. And here's a close-up of the floor plan. To the left is the first floor footprint, highlighted in red. You have a truck well, you have a warehouse, and you have several offices. To the left on the yellow highlighted are the dedicated parking spaces for this site. And to the right, there's a mezzanine that's upstairs, and it's going to be used for storage. And the mezzanine measures at 1,233 square feet. Here's a view of the tenant space looking north. And here's a view of the exterior. Notice the truck well and the side entrance for the warehouse. And with that, we come to the recommendation. I do just want to point out to amend condition number 24 on the resolution. So if you take a look at that, there's a sentence that should read, "Trucks delivering products to the site shall unload within the property interior," and then with the rest, "truck parking, stopping loading, and unloading are prohibited on public street alleys." So we're looking to amend that condition. And with that, staff recommendations to adopt resolution number PC 21009 for conditional use permit number 905. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. No, they're not proposing any manufacturing, just warehouse and distribution.
Okay, let's open public hearings.
No comments in favor or opposed.
We need a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Brago, second.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. In that case, we need a motion to adopt Planning Commission resolution number PC 21009.
Commissioner Brago, I move that we adopt the Planning Commission resolution number PC 21009.
Mr. Chair, that motion would also include the amendment to condition number 24.
Also, right, amending condition 24, excuse me.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, item number five, conditional use permit number 906, a request by Rick Rodriguez, Sr., RMI International, and Jose Robles with the J. Robles Law, to obtain a federal firearms license for the purchase of firearms in support of the existing private patrol operator at 8119 Somerset Boulevard in the CM, which is Commercial Manufacturing Zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This item is a request to allow a private security business to continue to sell firearms to employees of the business. No sales to the general public will be permitted. The property is located at 8119 Somerset Boulevard, and Assistant Director John King will give you the details.
Thank you, John. I think you, Chair Weisenberger and Commissioners. So you may have seen this business or heard of it, or RMI International, they're actually a really, they're a large security business. They're international, so they started in Downey, I believe, and moved here in 2006. And they were fortunate to get a contract with Honda Motors, so they, their guards patrol Honda facilities all over the world, and they have a big contract with Metro, the transit agency here in the county. So again, they're requesting to obtain a federal firearms license for the purchase of firearms in support of their PPO, which is Private Patrol Operator, and it's just east of Somerset, on the north side in the CM Zone. There's a photo here. They own, it's a few properties, it's kind of like a campus, and on the, this photo, the leftmost photo is the property in question. So again, 2006, they've been here. The State Bureau of Security and Investigative Services, they issued a license for this location, which is now their headquarters, in 2007. And the FFL, that's with the Federal ATF, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. So again, they're huge. They have hundreds of employees all over, but here in Paramount, they're at their headquarters, it's a staff of 24, and they operate normal business hours, Monday to Friday, nine to five. They do have a security guard all the time, just in case. Here's a site plan showing the three properties together. So again, it's the leftmost of these three, is the subject property. We can see how they're kind of interrelated. There is a condition of approval to update their, it's a standard condition, actually, to update the parking lot for ADA, Americans with Disability Act compliance. So they're going to be redoing the parking stall shown on, that's on 8129 Somerset. You might have seen, they also have another building at the northeast corner of Somerset and Orazaba that's, there's intervening, there's another property owner in between, but, so they own quite a few properties, and they've been, no complaints through the years. So we do want to take this opportunity, although there was a, just to kind of explain, they did have a firearms license previously. It expired last year, and I had the opportunity to talk to an agent from the ATF, and she explained, yeah, with COVID, there was some delay, so it's not out of the ordinary. And while it lapsed, they, RMI, they wanted to switch from one of their business entities to another, and that's, so they're applying for that under RMI International. And so just to make sure, we're taking this opportunity, and actually, it was at the recommendation of the ATF, the CUP. With these conditions, sales of firearms to the general public are prohibited. They never intended to do so, to sell to the general public, only to employees, but just in case, since CUP is running with the land, we wanted to make sure that that's on there. There is a condition, no signs about, regarding firearms on the outside of the building can be in public view. We just don't want to announce it too loudly. They'd have to maintain a good inventory, per all regulations of the various agencies, and comply, and again, as I mentioned, comply with ADA requirements. And photo on the right, that is, that is, there are two safes. It's very secure, so you have, they have a secure property, there's a gate, there's, again, 24-hour guard response, or they're present. There's code access to get inside the building, it's in a secure room, and then there's the safe, and all the various protocols. So with that, we think this is good, just, it's just in case, kind of conditional use permit, and they've been, they have no problem with any of these conditions, so we recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
In that case, and since there's no questions, let's open up the public hearings tonight. John, any comments?
No comments.
We need a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Commissioner Brago, I move that we close this public hearing for conditional use permit 906.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, we need a motion now to adopt Planning Commission resolution number 21010.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll motion to approve.
Sparza, will second.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, item number six, oral reports.
Yes, so at last night's city council meeting, the city council introduced an ordinance regarding single-room occupancy developments that you had heard at your meeting last month. Again, this would only be allowed in the multiple-family residential zone. It's a requirement of our housing element to implement this program, and also to meet a federal regulation regarding fair housing. So that was introduced, and that will be on their next agenda for adoption. And that's it. Thank you.
Item seven, comments from our city attorney.
Mr. Chair, just the fact that next Tuesday, I am giving a AB 1234 ethics training, I think some of you will be attending. It will be very entertaining. You'll learn a lot, and for those who decided to go online, you're missing out greatly because this is so much better.
And there's a great teacher, huh?
And you got a great teacher, too, in it.
And a good dinner.
I'm looking forward to all of you attending. Thank you.
And a good dinner.
Thank you.
Yeah. Chairman Sparza wants to know if there's dinner involved.
There is.
There is.
Oh, there is, huh?
That's going to be the most entertaining part of it.
All right, any comments from our commissioners tonight?
No.
Okay, staff?
Yes, I have two comments this evening. Antilio Garcia, who's not here this evening, is retiring. His last day is this coming Friday. He had been with the city for 35 years, and we're very sorry to see him go. He was actually a contract inspector with Willdan, and then he was hired on as the city's first employee inspector, so he set the trend. And with us this evening, we have Rick Bautista. You may know Rick. He is a building inspector, and Rick is going to be our interim building and safety manager for six months, and then hopefully we'll transition Rick into that position permanently. And Rick has been with the city since 2006, and he's done construction all of his life and was a superintendent for 10 years. And Rick has all the required certifications for a building inspector, so we're very happy to welcome Rick this evening and introduce him to you. He'll actually start on Monday, so. And then my second comment is regarding our intern, Erica Barbero. Erica's been with us for about a year and a half, almost a year and a half, and she is graduating from UC Irvine with her master's degree anytime now, any day now, and she has accepted a position with Esperanza Community Housing, which is a nonprofit housing developer located in South Los Angeles. So we're going to be sorry to see Erica leave, and also Antilio. But we're happy to have Rick, so thank you.
Good luck, Erica. Any other comments here, gentlemen, ladies? In that case, we'll move to adjournment to our meeting, our next meeting on July 13, 2021, at 6:00 p.m.
And we'd like to call the order, our Public Development Review Board meeting for June 9, 2021. Can I get a roll call of members?
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Sparza.
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Chair Brago.
Here. Can we get an approval of the minutes for May 11, 2021?
Sparza will make a motion to approve minutes of May 11.
Roll call.
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Sparza.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Brago.
Yes. Next item is public comments.
No public comments.
Okay, new business, item number two.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Chair Brago. This item is a request for an extension of development review application 20006, and this is a request for a one-year extension, and this will allow for the construction of about a 3,100 square foot commercial building with three suites at 7351 Rosecrans Avenue. This application was originally approved by the Development Review Board in May of 2020, and that has expired, so they're requesting the one-year extension this evening, and our planning intern, Erica, will go over this item with you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Chair Brago and board members. So tonight, I am going to be presenting development review application number 20006. The location of the property is 7351 Rosecrans Avenue for Torino Azul LLC. So again, the request is for a one-year extension to construct a 3,136 square foot commercial building at 7351 Rosecrans Avenue in the C3 General Commercial Zone. The project was initially approved by the Development Review Board in May 2020, and the building will have three separate units to be leased for retail use. At this time, there are no decided tenants at the moment. Here you see an aerial view of the location. The property is located on the western part of Garfield and Rosecrans, and as you can see, there are already two existing buildings, one to the north and one to the east. The development will take place in the yellow square. This is the site plan of the proposed development. The single-story structure is highlighted in the red circle. Currently, the site has 56 vehicle spaces and three-year ADA. This is a rendering of what the project will look like when it's complete. As you can see, the structure will be of stucco exterior, stone wainscot, and decorative metal awnings. First unit will be 1,050 square feet, the second unit 1,036 square feet, and the third unit will be 1,050 square feet. The architecture is meant to match the existing structures on the property. The development will meet all design standards, and the applicant will be required to install three bike racks and one EV parking, electrical vehicle parking spot as a condition of approval. The image here is the property looking north on Rosecrans. This photo was taken this past Monday, so this is the most up-to-date condition of the site. Again, this is the property looking west, and again, this is the most up-to-date condition of the site. With that, staff recommends approval for the extension of development review application number 20006, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have one question. I'm familiar with that shopping center, and parking's very tight. Are they extending the parking? Is there going to be a few more parking spaces in front of the unit?
As of now, no, but we understand that parking is a challenge in this area, especially because of the alfresco dining program that we currently have. We are expecting the parking to be available once the program ends, and once the building is complete, the program will most likely not be in operation. So we expect them to have more than enough parking available.
Sounds good. All right, so can we get a motion to approve the request for the extension for Torino Azul LLC?
Sparza will second.
We have a first and a second.
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Sparza.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Brago.
Yes. Next one is the comments. Any comments from our board members? Staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, this adjourns our meeting, the Paramount Development Review Board. The next meeting will be on July 13 at 6:00 p.m.
Board Member Brago.
Here.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Present.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Vice Chair Sparza.
Here.
Chair Bautista.
Board Member Gutierrez, I'll motion to approve. Board Member Brago, second.
We need a roll call.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Board Member Brago.
Yes.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Chair Bautista.
No public comments, sir.
Yes, so John King will give you a presentation on employment.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Bautista and board members. Just a brief report, this is, we don't have the most up-to-date information. We're going off of information from the California State Employment Development Department about the April numbers that was released for the end of May, so we're looking forward to the next month's numbers pretty soon, and there's always this lag. So the unemployment rate, it's not great, 8.3%, but it is about half of what it was a year ago, so that's a positive trend. Although you can see it has been a little, there's stagnant, a stagnant decrease between March and April, so hopefully the next numbers shows a lower unemployment number. Can only hope.
Can only hope. Payroll jobs, so jobs are going up, and you can see it's ticking up. You can see a year ago, again, it was a little under 15 million, and now it's a little over 16 million payroll jobs. A lot of that, with dining coming back and leisures, that's kind of the growth area, which is good, but again, they're not always the most highest-paying jobs, so we've got to keep that in mind. And also looking at, between other states, California does have a higher unemployment rate compared to most states. I think Hawaii is the highest. And then here's, this slide just kind of shows the trends with civilian employment, civilian labor force, and unemployment. That's really it, just to point out, unfortunately, you know, we do have the state number. LA County tends to be, the unemployment numbers tends to be just a little higher in Los Angeles County compared to the rest of the state. And cities in the southeast region like Paramount tend to be just a little bit higher than the county as a whole. And that's just a traditional trend, but hopefully we're looking forward to better numbers as the year goes on. And that concludes my presentation. That's a good question. Well, before we get to the manufacturing area, there are some higher-profile restaurant openings. Donuts, which is connected with Orchitrera Rio Luna, same owners, they opened up their location at Downey and Alondra about a month ago. It's kind of a soft opening, they're, virtually they're going to do a bigger splash, but they have some very creative, colorful, bright donuts. And they have some interesting murals on the inside, so they've tied in with some artists to do the murals that, it's kind of interesting, it extends from the wall to the floor. They did some artistic touches on the floor itself. There's that, and then there's a, kind of blanking on the name of the restaurant, but there's a Salvadoran restaurant on Rosecrans, 8335 Rosecrans Avenue. We were sat in to see the La Diosa de los Moles, and there was another mole restaurant that was briefly in there at that location, that closed due to COVID. But we have a new type of restaurant. You don't, I don't think there's another Central American-style storefront restaurant in Paramount. So that's some good news, and maybe we could all try those on our time. And then on the manufacturing side, remember you approved the food hall conditional use permit for the Platini jeans site on Alondra, just west of Garfield. So we think that's going to be a great use to kind of recycle that location to, their retail portion of their business wasn't doing so well. You know, I'll follow up in the next week. Last I heard was about two weeks ago, they were still working on securing contracts with some smaller businesses to fill in their spaces before moving forward with the construction plans. So that would be, we can get you an update at the next meeting. Yes, well, we do have, there are some sites, they're not official, no one submitted an application, just kind of concepts that we are thinking about. And yes, those are great ideas, we, they're easy to, well, not easy is the word, but less costly for them to set up, you know, you kind of drop these containers and convert them. Some are already pre-converted, and you just kind of paint them and fill them in with different restaurants. There's another one in, not far in north, Long Beach, Artesian Atlantic, I believe. So we, and another one, well, yeah, so we're aware, and as we get more news that we could publicly announce, I, don't get me wrong, there's nothing on the immediate horizon, but there are a few minor rumblings that we'll let you know about.
The food hall's going to be very similar to the Steel Craft, just indoor. So that's going to be good, you're bringing in a lot of foot traffic from outside the city coming into the city.